Can you hear us?
I can hear you now.
We can hear you, but that means we're all on the same page. Chris, are we recording? We are broadcasting. Okay. I think we're good. In order to please rise for the flag, so young people from Plana to help us.
You're gonna introduce them here? I was gonna introduce afterwards, okay? Okay.
Running again. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right.
Please tell us about these two young people.
I wanted to introduce you to two students. Say stuff. I know, it's weird when you're on the screen too. Wait, this is Lane Starr and this is Connor Juanus. Lane, can I tell them what grade? Oh, Juanus, I'm sorry, I always do that. Connor and Lane, can you tell them what grade you're in and something they would love to do or something that you want to be when you grow up?
I'm in fifth grade or when I grow up.
So Connor, what grade are you in?
Third grade.
And what is something you'd love to do or what do you want to be when you grow up?
What I love to do is watch.
Yes, thank you guys very much for leaving our flag salute.
Thank you.
Did you get it? I got some I can send to you. Okay, perfect. Okay. Welcome to Palina Elementary School. We're happy to have you guys out here. Hope you've got some snacks presented by our Mindy Nelson, which we so appreciate, but hope there's something to be go through. Tonight we are going to introduce or I'm gonna celebrate a group and an individual. Some first, can I get Emily Kylie Gunner to come up? Okay, this is Emily Kylie and Gunner Harmon. I'm gonna read you a little bit about why we are recognizing them today. Emily Kylie and Gunner are being recognized for participating in the county's library summer reading program. Gunner has a great attitude. Emily and Kylie both love to read and support each other in their reading. Good job reading during summer. And I want to tell you a little bit about the summer reading program that is a little different than in town for out of Palina. We're really happy with and excited about the partnership that our Fort County Library has for our students of Palina, between the bookmobile and the summer reading program that they designed specifically for kids in rural areas. So what that means when they sign up, they got a free book. And then they had to read fifteen minute increments at a time. They had benchmarks set up throughout the summer. And then at that benchmark, if they had read an appropriate number of books or an appropriate number of minutes, then they would get another free book and they would keep going. And then at the end, they then got to put their names in a drawing. And we have two other students who aren't here tonight who also participated in the summer reading program, participated and completed. And that is Reese and Rayland Bedortha, they're not here. But they are also being recognized for participating in the county's library summer reading program. They offer their serious thoughts and their fun attitudes in reading books and an inspiring literacy for everybody else. So when the library's summer reading program was offered out here with some wonderful help from the community, including Donna Rash, these children took the opportunity and ran with it. And all the kids out here got entered into a big drawing and Rayland won the big drawing for a local gift card. Did he help, did he, are you guys anything with it? Maybe yes. So I want everybody to give a round of applause because participating in summer reading. So you just start with the coffee and they're gonna go around and you're gonna shake hands or give high fives. And then if they have any questions for you, the two things. Two kids.
Thanks for coming up.
And then we have one other student. And then I have one other student to recognize. And this is from Ms. Mindy Nelson. So Cora, can you come on up? Mindy said, when I, when I was to recognize one student tonight, I struggled because each student brings something special out to the fourth to eighth grade classroom in school. This particular student excels in various areas such as demonstrating an admirable work ethic in her studies, relationships, and outside of school. Cora Childers excels academically, is trusted, a kind friend, volunteers her time to decorate doors, looks like cards for staff appreciation days, participates in 4H, runs across country and track, and has a payment outside of school hours. In addition to all of her hard work, she is incredibly curious and creative. Her artistic talents include drawing, painting, and stitching, creating cards and signs, visualizing projects and bringing them to life, and would invest handwriting words all day long if that wasn't a big help. Cora, it is a great honor to recognize you tonight, not only for all you have accomplished, but also for all the helpful kind and for the helpful kind and respectful person in your heart. And it's not so much you, and she did not agree that herself, because she sent her tears. Love you so much. And I want to tell you that Cora's art that she put in for the Hugs and Mugs Art Contest was, I just wanted to show you one of the artistic things she loves to do, watercolors, and her business on the side. And it's got some Christmas tags and some Christmas cards in the office that she also cast personally. So thanks for being a great part. You know, you're gonna notice behind you that those are forest service mats of the fires from this summer that most impacted our community. And while you can see after the meeting everyone, as we place the names of our students out there and where they are in relationship to some of those fires, this really kind of interesting information to get you the scope of how this school was impacted and how it's getting protected. So thank you guys for the.
Thank you. Okay, let's back up just a second. Note that all board members are present. Jen Knight is on the screen and will participate fully tonight, but will keep her camera off. She had some surgery and is in recovery. So her doctor told her she would not be driving the plane. So Jen, just checking again, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. It's glitchy though.
All right, we will try and be louder now. Checking the sound in the room, can everybody in the audience hear? That's a good sign when that works. Okay, we will, last thing is to say, we're gonna go through the business tonight. We actually can be pretty efficient if we choose to be. And then we will have a work, an executive session immediately following this meeting whenever we conclude business. So with that, we'll now go to a campus attendance review. Dr. Skinner, what is this?
Well, we started our attendance competition last month, so this will be the second month to recognize. So for October, the category for rule, non-traditional. Last month was Carrie for Palina. And so you will stand Carrie. And so this month, she does not have to hand it off. Palina won for October ninety-three point seventy-one percent. She gets. For our second category, we have some principles that are actually virtual. So for our traditional comprehensive school, we had last month Steen's pillar one. So I think Brian is on for Steen's pillar. Mindy, all right, so Brian is on. He has the trophy, but this month he will have to hand it off to Barnes Butte. And I believe Taylor is on. So our champion for October, Barnes Butte's ninety-three point seventy-eight percent. So Brian will take that over to Barnes Butte tomorrow.
I can't wait to see it, Brian.
Taylor, can you hear it? Okay. Okay, for our group champion, last month was Grizzly Mountain. So he will stand, Mr. Skinner will stand. So for this month, the growth champion, that means last year to this year's same time, growth champion, Grizzly Mountain gets to keep it at seven point forty-five percent growth. Mr. Skinner, you sat down and you're supposed to get your picture.
Gotta get the picture. These are the rules.
All right. So Taylor, we will have to get your picture when Brian brings it over tomorrow. Great job, Barnes Butte and Grizzly Mountain and Palina fourth attendance this month, the month of October.
We are excited to win and Brian, you can bring us coffees too.
She just added another layer to the competition.
Why not? Why not? I'll pass it on, I'll pass it on. Hopefully I don't ever have to give it away, so.
That's right, so next month you will have to bring it to the board meeting, we'll see.
Yeah, sounds good. Thanks guys.
All right, agenda additions, deletions, or revisions, and then a motion to approve. We do have minor wording change in the minutes and a new hire that's already acknowledged plus some items marked for action.
So. So maybe not. So three point three. I'm wondering, there is a line item on there for consultant like Eric Swan. But I'm wondering about taking something like the Reagan side of it can complete. You know, where we can start promoting the long-range facility and pulling with our community. Does that sound any to me that I completely separate? Or can I just talk about that with you? Because it's not necessarily listed enough. If there is consulting, but not him.
Tell me if you have a different view, but I think the answer to that would be that you would add that piece once the consultants committee started a meeting instead of what it wanted to pull on. So they start meeting, they narrow down your options, they will pass the questions. You can add that piece later.
Right there.
Yes.
Okay. So it's not in this next right now that consult about Eric Swan.
Yeah, because we have the long-range facility plans into the three point.
Sure, so I think maybe once we get to that, we should, when we get to that.
The RFP part, I think we'll answer that. Okay. Then I don't. So I'm wondering that what can you, there's nothing on there about furthering that, does that make sense? So I just, I don't know if there's a line item added to that or if we need a whole other line item to.
Right, well, if you wanted to see another consultant added, yes, you would need a new one. And we can do it, let's do that. Can we put this off the consent agenda?
Okay.
If we can cover that when we get to that.
All right, then I don't have any. Mr. Chair, I thought in addition to talking about joining the community's board.
Okay. Just skipping under three five.
There is one thing in the consent agenda I have questions about. There's some resignations that are dated for actually tomorrow. I don't know if we can be approved them if their letters are dated for the fifth. And not, not Jay, Jay here, just in case it was a special something in those letters.
If there's a resignation that's coming up, that will still, you're just approving that resignation to the date that it stated. Does that make sense? Good. Any other changes, additions, deletions? Motion to approve the agenda has amended?
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Cheyenne, second goes to Jessica. All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, Jen, we picked up your approval there. All right, thank you. That the agenda is approved, let's go to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Removing the.
But there might have been. Oh, I did have a clarifying question. On the minutes, like three point five, three point four, three point five, three point six, it just says board asks clarifying questions. Do we have to put the details of that in there or is that? Cause there's not like, then I'm doing anything to go along with that. It doesn't really say what was said or done.
It's up to you as a board member, what level of detail you want.
I would ask you to put clarifying questions on these.
Just ran to like our last meeting, we didn't hit report. Yeah, so then there is not.
Yeah.
So we may want to maybe make it standard. But there is some detail. I don't know.
There is that. Let's, are we okay with approving it now and then let's add a discussion. And we're adding three point six, so we're gonna need about minutes.
I move to approve the agenda. A second.
Our motion, Chan, and second to Jessica, all day say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries, we'll be generous, positive vote, we're gonna, okay, we are up to the OSBA. Now, I'm gonna like take a big leap, guessing what I know about you guys, what I think you think. And I'm gonna propose that we do this in one bell loop and not waste a lot of time. And then we support our friend Lori Zuka from Jackson County, who is the only person to apply for the board. And that we oppose the bylaws and the dues assessment plans that they were putting out. Just say that's it. All we gotta do is say revolution.
I have it right here, so we have to do no action than others. So Lori Zuka is saying her. Resolution one, yes, do not adopt, stay in their middle action.
And oppose the other two.
Yeah. I think that other take a no action.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, I just wanna like.
Yes, Lori, no bylaws, don't do.
Yes, no, no action, no action.
To just clarify, you're saying don't you not adopt?
But there is no and there's no action. So I would rather do no action.
No, no, we went through no action, rather than no, that's no way to.
So. So Lori, you're saying.
You want to oppose, right?
I'd rather just do no action. I mean, I'd rather. Oh, that's, well, the dues, he's saying no. Yeah. To that, but this one, she's wanting to say no action is what she's getting at.
So you don't want to, okay, well, with that, maybe we better take one at a time.
That's why I was like, I think.
All right, so let's start with the. Your motion to your favor, motion to your favor, Lori, we're down. Motion from. You, your second support board. I'll second it to make it look good. Okay, is there any other discussion? All those.
I just, I don't know. And we got a very small generic paragraph about Lori, so that necessarily really opposed or approved, I just, I think I'm on the same lines as Cheyenne, just. I want to know. Yeah, I don't know how that works. That's what I want.
We're gonna take a vote, three ways, vote yes, no, and abstain.
Okay, that's what I said, okay.
Jen?
Yes.
You got anything to contribute to this?
I do not.
Okay, let's take a vote then, all those in favor, maybe yes, no, or abstain. In favor of supporting Lori Danzuka for the OSBA board, the yes, Virginia?
Yes.
Yes. Day three, those who oppose, and those who abstain.
Or not. No, it's just a direction, stay in or election.
No action. Okay, so two, so that would be, so that motion passes three to two. Okay, now we are at the, we're on the. This was raise the dues, test the dues, raise the dues immediately and put it on the annual.
For five years, so five years.
CPI for just for five years.
Is this on the agenda?
Yes.
But we're on.
We are at item three to eight two.
We actually can't hear.
Oh, sorry.
Three point two OSBA resolutions for the dues.
So three point two, raising the dues. Are you discussing?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I motion to not adopt OSBA's schedule.
My second.
Motion is to disapprove the resolution. Okay. Motion is to disapprove.
To not accept. So I'm confused by all the options. So there's yes, adopt, no, not adopt, abstain, or no action.
Okay, so the motion is, we need a discussion on that motion. Was there a second? Yeah. Second, got the second. All right, we'll do a discussion on that.
Scott?
In favor? Yes.
Sorry, it's glitchy, I tried to jump in. So if we don't adopt the OSBA dues schedule, then, then what happens? I mean, what are the ramifications of this?
We're only telling them how we're gonna vote, so it depends on how the rest of the school boards vote.
Oh, okay.
Register a no vote. Then whatever happens will happen with the other hundred and thirty-seven.
Oh, okay, so you're gonna do the motion on the table, and I'm sorry, it is glitchy, is that we do not adopt this?
The motion is to oppose the resolution.
Okay.
So if you vote yes, you're in opposition. Okay, you vote no, then you want some other. All right? All those in favor of opposing the resolution to raise the dues, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Jen votes yes. Those opposed, none, motion passed, we are opposed to that resolution. All right, the next resolution is on the divide. Number two, which is the, yeah, that is the pride to greet the Oregon's school board members, pride caucus, and designated seat, and OSBA board of members, and legislative council.
So I think the way you just explained it to Jen, I think now we understand what you're saying is a no vote. Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Sense?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I move to. All right, is there any discussion? Jen, did you hear the motion?
It's to oppose this one, just like the last one, correct?
Motion number two, correct? Any discussion from you, because it's not here?
No.
All those in favor of the motion to oppose, means you don't like the resolution. Say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay, you're against that resolution. And then there were a whole variety of other resolutions, grab bag of there, that they wanted to. You're right, that's resolution three, big grab. Yes, maybe you do something. Motion to oppose from Steve. Okay, Cheyenne is seconding that, any discussion? All those in favor of opposing the grab bag of amendments, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, carries, we're against that. Okay, beautiful, well done. All right, three point four, community partnership opportunities, Dr. Haun. I think Ron's, the long-range facilities. Sorry, long-range facilities, plan three point three.
So in fact, you have a three point three resolution. This was created at the request of the last school board meeting on October fourteenth, to come back with a resolution. We have a feasibility study and this kind of just tied it up, go around it. So we can come back with the resolution for a long-range facility plan assessment resolution. So in that, you'll see a convenient composition, a skill responsibility, interaction with the school board, financing timeline, vital deliverables, compliance, the consultant role, and the competitor.
We need a motion that was session about what I want to.
Okay, you want to just open a discussion? Anything for that, go ahead.
So my question is, as we play out this timeline, I understand the role of the long-range facilities and what we're, you know, obviously trying to put together. But I would like to see within that timeline or whether that's, you know, in final deliveries, I think that it's gathering that information is the first step, but we also need to then get it out into our community. Pull the options that we have pulled, everything we're getting that Leland and the committee brings forward. Cause I think for us on the board, that gives us a better idea of want a timeline, when the community would want to see the work. What if that work we'd like to see? Because then I think that also goes into that role that Eric Swan was gonna play in helping us get a long range, you know, in fifty years plan. So I, I think that it goes together as a whole. So I would like to see that, I think the timeline, I guess, either have that role added in. But I, I just think that we continue to bring, I mean, how many times may I want to be put together a long-range, you know, facilities packet? I think once you get all that info to us, we need to also get it out to our community so we can better understand what they're looking for, what they are looking to get behind when it comes to the bond, then we could get a timeline together. I think this feeds into understanding when we as a board should look at putting together a bond. But I'm not, I feel like that should go in that, in this somewhere. So I don't know, I may be off Leland, but.
So a couple of things about the timeline.
Okay.
So when you get ready to hire the consultant to do the, the assessment and the long-range facilities one, that needs to happen before you completely put your long-range facilities committee together. So just because we apply for a TAF grant this coming January, doesn't mean we will give one. So if we don't get one, you're gonna be paying about eighty thousand dollars in consulting fees out of our own pocket that we don't have a grant. So the board would need to decide, do we want to go wait till we get the TAF grants so that we can hire the consultant? Cause you would probably have a better chance the second year we apply versus the first year. But as soon as you get the TAF grants and know you have those, then the RMP for the consultant can go out and you could start the whole long-range facilities committee process of gathering, recruiting those people. Did that answer your question? Sort of.
Yeah, that's the beginning part of this, that grant process. That's step four. I was talking about when we get to step five through eight, you know, that timeline, the final deliveries, the consultant role of this process. Wouldn't we want to have that information out, getting out to the community so we could get some feedback at what we're looking like and what they are anticipating in a bond? Cause to me, this is all we're leading up to when we as a board need to decide what our community's looking at for a bond.
Well, I would think you would, you would want to get your long-range facilities committee, start, start putting them together while the assessments are going on. The assessment in the long-range facilities plan, they're gonna show what things are wrong with the buildings. It's also gonna show student projections, it's gonna show, the last time we did it, we actually had meetings with the administrators and the teachers to find out what's important for the students, not just for the building itself. And that all was into that long-range facilities. So once you start to put that plan together, we want that feedback from the community. But if you get too much feedback from the community, it'll stray away from what the consultants are finding we really need to do in the plan. So I think you want to kind of work the two of those worlds together to, to try and keep your committee engaged. But then again, we wanna focus on what was getting put into the plan.
Going for a couple options. You could try to cement the timeline into the current resolution that you're looking at, as option one. You could adopt this resolution as it stands, and then later adopt another resolution with further timeline, since some of these things affect the future timeline, that. Third option is just to make those decisions as you go, because those decisions don't require a resolution, so it doesn't have to be, those decisions don't have to be cemented into this resolution or a future resolution, which you could do in one of those options.
So that and the rant, so the grant you're talking about doesn't pay the polling consultant?
The grants, the only thing, those two grants, they're forty thousand dollars each. One will pay for the consultant or an art, usually it's usually an architect or someone like that to do a a full building assessment where they come out, they go through all the other, all the buildings. The other grant pays for the long range facilities plan, which is where that consultant will bring all of the the committee together, and we'll have several meetings where uh talk about all kinds of things, so we gather all that community input at that point, and want to get that information from the community. So that's what happens while we're meeting with long range facilities. As we build the chat, is we want the feedback from the community, and that's where we would get that, is when we start to add those committee meetings.
So are, I guess, are other members of the community, are these meetings open to all, or only that's on the committee?
It was a public meeting last, it was a public meeting last year, or last time we did it, and I think we had about thirty five fully committed members that came to the meetings. And that's a pretty good crowd to try and, to try and work all that kind of information the way they do it, with thirty five people, I mean, you're divided up in groups, but but it's still, that's a lot of people. Well, we can make it, we can make the the content and the feedback that comes from the community fit into it however the board would like.
I just, I think at some point we have to start gathering information, because I'm I, not speaking for the board, I am trying to understand when we need to, I mean, if you look at the timelines for these bonds, I mean, you'd really like, you need to be eighteen months out to really be on a good timeline, if you read through those timelines that were presented, so it's hard for me to understand when, when uh up here as board members, we need to start putting that grant in motion. So that's where I was looking for the community input from a polling company that would kind of give us an idea, hey, is it next November? Is it two years from now? Are we gonna wait for roll off from Facebook? Like, what are we looking at in our community for casting a bond? So.
So you can have several things happen, you can have the committee come to you between now and next November, and say, hey, we'd like to put some polls out in the field, we have these questions, we'd like the board to allocate money to support a pollster, which you could do if you wanted to do. You could receive the, do nothing, and receive the committee's recommendation next November, and say, huh, I think we wanna go test that out, we make a final decision. Then you could send your pollster out, you could accept the pollster or the committee's recommendation next November, and you could say, we don't need any more information, we're ready to go. You know, you've got all those options along the way, I think the the real question for you is, this has you going to November before you actually begin to talk about the shape and size of the fall, do you wanna wait that long?
No.
That's what I thought you were getting at.
That's why it's like, and now, I mean, if you add eighteen months to that timeline, you're, I mean, you're already out two years.
And on that last bond timeline that we presented, there were several like line items where you could do a a poll like early to get like a broad sense, there was another one that was more specific, so that the I think it was the last one we presented, I think you found like at least two different options where you could kind of poll.
And I think I read those timelines wrong, because to me, you're accepting the timeline like that, I submitted a motion, because I thought we had to have when we're gonna go out for a bond, you know, this is what we're following, instead of knowing that this is a rough idea, and you can pick and choose off of here what you're gonna do, but when you get to this date, then it becomes solidified, so I didn't understand that, so I I really don't wanna wait two years in a sense, you know, to really, does that make sense? So I don't know how this needs to be adjusted to where we start getting information a bit earlier than that. But I also don't wanna throw off your your committee either, so I would, I would like to see maybe something earlier that we get information kind of moving now in the sense of a bond, so we're not out two years.
So in session three of that resolution, it talks about uh the committee chair of the long range facility plan uh coming and presenting periodically, so I, so I think that might be a good strategy for for them to come in February, we we don't wanna do every month, this might be kind of overkill, but we can just be real intentional, making sure they're coming and presenting uh periodically, more frequently it sounds like, and so that you guys are getting the most up to date information, and then can make motions or adjust the plan based on that, that information.
Well, didn't they add like, did you meet them like quarterly or something like that before?
Might have been every other month before they went, anytime you have a meeting, come back and give them up.
Yeah.
That's pretty sad.
And and these are public meetings, so there'll, there'll be minutes, we'll share that, you can have, uh and and what we'll do is we'll work with the board chair, or whoever to say, hey, we want an update on the the progress of the committee, so so that would keep you in tune throughout the spring, throughout the summer, so you can get these checkpoints, and then adjust what you do based on that.
So, so what if, to help address your concern, because who knows how long it's gonna take them to do their thing, so what if the final deliver was not later than November twenty? And then the committee can move faster, then they can bring their recommendation back whenever they got it done.
My concern is that we're gonna have a bad winter, and it takes so long, but we need to get moving on the bond sooner than later.
I don't think drawing out two years, I mean, after looking at those timelines, we are, it's a long process, and so, and I also don't want you guys to, you know, only be able to have, you know, two meetings, and then you guys aren't fully ready, does that make sense? I'm, I don't, after seeing the timeline, I don't know where, if if, I just worry solidifying this timeline in a resolution, and then we need to make adjustments, and how do we do that? Re revise the resolution, like?
So you you could, just looking at this, you could cut down your advertising, you could advertise starting right away, and appoint your committee in January, you could save a lot there. You could start your committee soon as it's appointed, you could meet same month as appointed, so start it, meet in January, the TAF grant, that happens, all that happens. And then you could have it be through March. And then begin your process probably, and then you can probably pick that up and start hiring in February, consultants. And you could, there's ways you can truncate this then.
Okay.
Maybe you don't have a checkers time.
And it just depends on if the board's um desire is to make sure we receive TAF grant before we hire a consultant. And that would be March fifteenth before we have it.
So if we approve the timeline of this resolution, Anna, that gives you the right, I guess, authority or time with us approving this to get your grant, and then realistically, we could look at hiring a consultant, what, by March? Is that what you're saying?
We could have it ready, because our ready and have it ready to go out on March fifteenth when we find out.
So if the board decides that regardless of the TAF grants, we're moving forward, we could actually create an RFP like right away and get it out on the street, and actually start looking at hiring our consultant. And then, and then if the, you know, we'll still apply for the TAF grant, and just wait to see if we've got the TAF grant, or we actually sign the contract with the consultant. And then, that would speed things up considerably.
Okay, could we still stay on the same timeline that's next November, interesting one, can you still, can we still stay on the same timeline for going out for next November? I mean, it was the last thing.
Well, we've tried a shortened timeline before.
But the technical answer is yes.
Yes, of course, we can do it.
You're just gonna go very short time itself.
A lot of time, so yeah, we're like a month behind, so we just have to, yeah, do the September to the part.
I just would like to get, I think, more info on the community side of where we stand on the bond, for now that I understand the timeline realistically for the district and the bond timeline, I think that it would be beneficial to move sooner rather than later to start gathering that information, because we also don't wanna be in that predicament too, Anna, where it's, you know, it's a struggle to get things moving, and that's really where we sit with our community, or maybe we really do have, you know, the full two years, and that's where the community is sitting. But I think getting that out and understanding that would help me understand the right timeline to go out for a fall.
But we have the option to not, if we get all the that, we have the option to not put it on the ballot, and we get that, so, yeah, we still need to get moving on it sooner.
What's the deadline for, if you wanna put an item on the November ballot, why do we have to file that question?
I don't have it on, I think it's August.
September, August. So for you to do that, you you can put in here that you've got a target timeline, I don't think it would be twenty twenty five ballot. That could always flex later, but that would go in there, then you would have to admit that you're gonna get this work done by July probably, in order to start the process after that, because you're gonna have to work with bond council, you're gonna have to work with the filed on the ballot.
It's all doable. One of the things I wanna mention is that the consultant would be advising you on when would the best time to, when would be the best time to go on, based on that intent.
Right, and that's the information, I like, when the resolutions or those timelines are brought to us last meeting, that's the part I don't understand, so that's why I would like to have that person or party or whoever it is, business be advising us, you know, this is what it's looking like, this is what your community is saying, and that gives us a better idea of because those timelines are long, and it would be more beneficial if we were with, within reasonable time for everyone, so that would, that's where.
So that's just kind of the wild card, is really, if we can, that consultant, we've got, in the ti, in the amount of time that gives you the opportunity to refuse, to make a decision, and then do a resolution prior to that, if it's on a filing deadline, and we don't know that.
November twenty five versus September twenty six, twenty six was a better option, but wasn't that, I don't.
Well, that's the turnout for voting, but that's, but that's not asking your community.
I don't, you know, but if if the turnout to actually, if there's possibly a turnout for for in August twenty six, which is twenty five, and the change here.
Correct. Yeah. So that's you think you got?
I mean, I'm, here's what, I'm in fun, I I think that's really rushing, it could be hard on you, but Steve and I are off the board in July, so you're putting this burden on yourselves, if you guys wanna take it on, I tend to support you. Because it's, you signed up for a lot of hard work, you're gonna need to have your work done, your facility by July first, if you're seriously going to be able to promote a bond in November next year. That's the only way that works.
Right, but I would like to know from our community if that even is something we would like to to look at, because we really do, we really gotta get moving if that's the case, and that's what I didn't understand last meeting when I proposed in November twenty twenty seven, because of how long those timelines were, so I'm all for that, if that's what the community comes back and says. If they come back and they just like Steve said, hey, all of that polling guy comes back and says, hey, you know, actually, until twenty twenty six, then we're in great shape, you know, there is zero.
You you could change on five, you could just change up that estimated timeline, so that way it's more, the district's not blocking any particular timeline or action, it can be flexible with faster or slower depending on where the case is.
So what did you think?
Did you say that the est- estimated timeline?
Okay. Number five. So instead of just timer, it's gonna be estimated.
So maybe, maybe we could do this, is anything else in the resolution problematic, or are we just into the timeline? Are you happy with the rest of it?
If the, if you're saying then we would come back and hire a uh the polling person that doesn't go in here, because my my concern was we have the consultant role listed, so I think they would need to go in there.
The only person would be a different.
Okay, so, okay.
Well, if you're okay with that, you're okay with the rest of it, what we would do maybe is just this timeline, we give some latitude to staff, if you will, and trust staff. So that we would label it estimated timeline. We would direct staff to rewrite the earlier portions of the timeline to make it fit. We would conclude the development of the long range facility plan not in October, but by July one. And we would add a line that says that the target timeline is a November twenty twenty five ballot. Now, all of that may adjust as we go along, that would put a sense of the board in there for the urgency with which you wanna move, what target point in. Then we'll let staff bring it back with adjusted family. Would that work? And that would get us to a point where we could adopt the resolution with those changes tonight, and then we'll see how that works.
And then it allows whatever comes back to make adjustments, do we come back and adjust the resolution, or do we?
I think you probably adjusted as you go along, and this, this is a central board, this is not a like statute. So this sense of the word can change as the circumstance evolves. It's a very aggressive type. But the, please, right?
Is it, but I, I'm a workaholic, and that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna do it.
But I wanna make sure, we're, we're also getting the community side, not just the target. Okay.
You are gonna truncate it something near the end, but just by the tight timeline.
Well, I'm saying, that's why I would like to put the polling in there, I would like to get those questions out, I would like to get a we heard from Reagan the last meeting, like, I would like to get somebody like that out polling, just the, this idea, the, when does the community want to see a bond, you know, are they in favor, do they not wanna see it, are they wanting?
It has nothing to do with what's in the bond, you're asking just technically.
Yeah, when, yes, that's fine.
To the last line, that was something that you had asked, and so we had polling kind of down, or was it more specific, or we had a package, we added it at the beginning, that was like last the last we brought to you, but like polling, it was like more generic, like, would you, you know, up for bond twenty twenty five, just some broad questions, we could add that, so it was like, okay, it was like an extra polling option, okay. There was more of a broad one at the beginning, and then more of a specific ones, we had the long reach facility committee together, we had more of a package, there was a couple of options for polling.
Okay.
And the ones that were broad.
So that is where I'm looking.
So what did we did, well, we put under final, it's a central board, put it under the final deliverables, put it under the book, so it says one of the final deliverables would be polling data and community input, which gives the board a sense of timing for a potential bond, and elements of a potential bond the community may support.
Yes.
And so that's a deliverable that'll come out of the process, and I'll give you that language after the meeting.
I got about half of it, we're watching. Yes, that, that hits what I'm looking.
Okay, so that'll be the elements of the board, the timeline, we talked about how we can get that, here going November, if we can remember that. Or all that, except for that.
So I would motion to adopt resolution number zero four two zero two four two zero two five, as amended. And we will get that language.
Second from Jessica, so, a motion to adopt the extensively amended resolution.
Sorry, I answered it on the different line item.
Jen, are you able to follow all that?
I am, it kept glitching out, so I'm trying to follow along and take notes as I go, so bear with me here. I am concerned that this, it is pretty aggressive in the timeline that's being asked, I'm concerned about our staff um being able to make this happen, I know Dr. Skinner said it will happen, um so those are, those are just my two concerns, I am thankful that it is getting amended in some ways. Um, so that's, that's just my two cents right now.
Yeah.
So I would just like to add that the only thing I wanted out of this was actually polling to hear from our community at when they're wanting the timeline of a bond, so as far as the change to staff and the twenty twenty five, if that's what the community wants, then we'll have to adapt to that, but the community may come back and say we'll have to adapt to that. But the community may come back and say twenty twenty seven.
Discussion? All the motions? Say hi, Ms. Can.
Hi.
Could she have something? Jen, we're in the middle of voting.
Oh, sorry.
So, uh, all those in favor say hi, Ms. Can.
Hi.
Hi.
I.
Opposed? Motion carried. Jen was in support. I'm sorry, Jen, did I, did you have something critical we could answer?
No, not at all.
Okay, so that motion. Done with the resolution. Thank you for the hard work on that. Thank you for the thought. I wasn't going to know what that would mean.
Community partnership opportunities, Dr. Joel Ha. Yes, Chris, that, uh, presentation up. We wanted to share with the board two community partnership opportunities. Uh, rumor has it that that actually might be Steve Holliday on that force. I'm not a hundred percent sure. Uh, so yeah, we just wanted to publicly share two community partnership opportunities. You go to the next slide. Uh, something we've been working on. Uh, we do a lot of partnerships with businesses, uh, like career fairs, uh, career days. Uh, we recently with Dr. Skinner coming in, this giant convocation, we had like twenty plus businesses come. And traditionally what we've done is just use the Chamber of Commerce. They represent a lot of businesses. Um, but what we've learned is that doesn't reach all our businesses, that you have to be a member of the chamber, you're not getting our email. So we, uh, came up with a troubleshoot. So if you go to that website, um, we wanted to share this and this will be on the district website. We've created a form where, uh, we'll still communicate through the Chamber of Commerce. However, flip over businesses that aren't a part of the chamber, if they want to be involved, be on our list, uh, they can fill out. Build some anticipation here. Uh, there, there's a link on our website where they can enter in basic information, uh, to, uh, to get on a list. So then whenever we have a career day, a, uh, convocation, we'll work with the chamber, but also work with any business that's signed up to be a partner. So that way there's no barriers to, to partner. This is true. And it's a great big call website. Chris, how we don't like? Share for everybody else. Uh, okay?
So just to clarify, the business belongs to the chamber, you'll have their info. But if they don't, and our community belongs to the chamber, they have the ability to sign up through our district website to get the same. I don't know, do you send out info through the chamber or?
Yeah, so whenever we have an event, we'll work with our contact at the chamber, they'll send it out, you know, their mass emails of, hey, whoever wants to attend, uh, complication or come to career day. This, now businesses that aren't part of the chamber, as long as they fill this out, we'll have our list of them and they can, uh,
So they'll get the same.
They'll get the same. Yeah. Okay, that was opportunity number one. Uh, if we do find the website, there is, uh, it's under resources. So if you go, uh, on the right there up top, any of our business partners, you can go to resources. Behind, behind the hidden part, uh, it says, uh, business, right there, business partnership interest form. You click on that. Real simple information to fill this out, they're on the site, we'll, we'll connect them. Any questions on the business interest partner form?
Is this the same for you, Levan, for businesses that want to be contacted for potential bids or how does that work?
I've never used that particular way to find contractors usually. Uh, we try and find all the local contractors we can. A lot of the time we would be working with contractors. And if it's large enough, these, these go out and bid, so ten thousand, it's over five thousand dollars, it's construction. We want to bid, it's maintenance or renovation, it's over ten, still.
And when you go out for a bid, that's made public to everyone or to only a certain?
I mean, we, we send it to, to contractors that we know might be interested. When they, when they contact us, I just know that they might want to be interested in working for us, we'll take their names and then we'll send them that. Send them, you know, bit of information.
Okay, so businesses as far as the construction side contact you to be put on a list to, okay.
The thing is, we as a district want to partner with, we, we want to prioritize our, our, our local businesses and partner with them. So, so that's opportunity number one. Um, the second opportunity is has to do with our integrated guidance. So if you remember, um, this is something that we have shifted to align with the board goals. Where in November and December, we're collecting all this information from the community to help inform the board goals as well as set a two-year integrated guidance plan. The integrated guidance is a, it's about a three point two million dollar grant that we get from the O D E. So we do, as a requirement, we have to do community, uh, outreach and engagement. So what we're doing to hear from, um, our community on this is, I hate to do this to you, Chris. I gotta go back to the website now to show them the other link. So, uh, integrated guidance will set a two-year plan. Um, in November, we're starting to gather the input, we're meeting with students, um, the community. If they would like to get involved, if you go to our website, uh, there's a link on there under the, uh, spotlight or news where they can give feedback on, uh, as we start the next budget cycle, what they'd like to see, what are their priorities, how do they rate, uh, on the academic progress. We're going to gather all that information from student listening groups, uh, this, this survey on the website. Pull that all together and the board will get a report compiled from a third party, um, company that says here's all this information, here's what our community is sending their priorities on. So just wanted to let the community know that is now on our website, um, under, uh, if you look right up there under C C D S spotlight, it says C C S D planning. Uh, we've got, so under the C C S D spotlight, planning and priorities input survey, as well as the Spanish version is right underneath there. Um, in addition, we'll have slips with the QR code and we'll be handing those out at, uh, the upcoming football game, we've got a soccer game on Tuesday, so that way we're getting it out, um, to as many people as we can. So that's all. And then you guys will get the, uh, the kind of aggregate results in, uh, December at the working. There you go. Two community input opportunities.
It's December, planning for the upcoming.
Uh, December will have a report of, we'll get you a lot of information and then January, you've set a work session, uh, to, to really dig into that.
Okay, so we'll have a month before.
All right, thanks Cooper.
Hey, Shan, we have a proposal for a community school boards association membership.
Uh, the community school boards of Oregon is, uh, new, um, organization that has come up for more rule, uh, school boards that are not in line, want to be in line so much with politics of Portland and Salem. And so the members they have now at Harrisburg, Eagle Point, Grants Pass, and the I guess the positive thing about joining them would be that they would be more in line with our community values, I think, or, uh, the values of current county. It doesn't, they're a pretty small organization. It doesn't mean that, I think they still buy their policies from OSBA and whatnot, but they're a bigger voice of other schools that maybe are not in line with some of the things that, um, that are coming down the pipes. It'd be nice to be in a membership with, uh, schools that to have a bigger voice rather than just being coming up. Um, so I would motion to join that board and add our name to the list of Harrisburg and Eagle Point Grants Pass.
Motion to join the board in community school board. Of Oregon. All right, that's a man. Uh, do a second.
Well, I have a second to discuss it. Thanks, I'll second it. Okay. So what? By joining and, and paying the dues, what, what does this associate for?
So I think it's done. So this association, I think it's like maybe a dollar student, it's not a huge amount of money, um, to join it, but they are a voice, um. So some of the, the agenda items maybe that come down or, uh, they take a, a more balanced approach, I think, than some of the stuff that comes down from Portland and Salem. So it's just joining another schools that maybe don't want to take on uh, some of the stuff that, some of the crazy stuff that Portland, uh, Salem are trying to push through. Um, so what they do for you is they issue statements. So for example, if there's really radical stuff in like the whole curriculum, the things are coming down, they issue a statement and because you're part of that board, they issue you your statements and releases in which, you know, why we would oppose some of the things that are maybe being forced on our law. And they leave more of an option open.
I'm not close to it. I just could be get a little more information on it. Can you have a snap look into it? It will be jumping forward. Oh.
Yeah, they have, I mean, they have a website and they're
Sure.
Like, so like the bill that we opposed, the H B two, the House bill, two forty, they were very aggressive and saying, no, we don't have that stuff. Of course, on school districts, we want really cool. It's just a breakaway. It seems like, um, you know, some of the, the things we have in Oregon, there's, uh, there's a monopoly on endorsing school districts to try and give up their local control. And they're just another voice to help those school districts that don't want to give up local control. And you're, it's better than others, right? Like it's better if we say, hey, yeah, by Grants Pass, we're not wanting this Eagle Point, Harrisburg, and they're, they're smaller and more rural districts. So I don't want to reinforce them to some of the agenda items. Then maybe they'll stand.
Got the motion we got.
What are your thoughts on it, Scott?
Well, the last time I looked at it, I thought we were too big. I thought they're cut off the twenty five hundred students or less.
No, because we're
That may have changed.
Yeah, I don't think so. I mean, we can look and get more information. So then we would need to, I mean, you have to vote, you just pull that motion. I think. Well, I, I will withdraw the motion to join.
Three, two, one, second.
I, I second that.
I feel like, oh, there's no more time at the table. The idea.
Yeah.
Right, but the motion needs to include that.
I don't know if you figure it, sorry, I just think it seems like you've scheduled.
Yeah.
You're jumping in fully, go calling what, what you're jumping into.
So I would motion to appoint Dr. Skinner to please look into the community school board of Oregon and bring us back their dues and what they could offer our board. And we will look at that, uh, until we have it back in December. So I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, motion from Cheyenne to the director to scan, look into membership of the community school boards association of Oregon.
Yeah.
And the second from Jessica, any other discussion? All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There is Jen, were you coming out on that?
I, I was, um, I, uh, can I do discussion part of this since you moved so fast?
Well, actually, we just voted on it. So you're either a yes or a no.
Yes.
Did you get the motion? The motion is to have staff investigate and bring it back into the center.
Yes, I heard that part. I was trying to get muted, unmuted. So, yes.
Okay, you're good with that. You want to add something else?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
The motion passes and we'll see it in December. Cool. And then three point six, how much do we want in the minutes, Jessica? Over there, minutes, not hours.
I
That's the fine balance.
Yes, I don't know how to, I don't know if there's really a way to like, um, solidify what all has to be in it. But we ran into our last meeting where the first hour didn't get recorded. And so I don't know that ask a clarifying question. We probably need either what the question was. Maybe you don't need, you know, an entire paragraph that at least what the question was. I don't know that, I don't know there's a way to set a word limit on it. I'm just saying, I think we have to put in the question of this was asked or something.
There's not a video to back it up.
You want a reference to the question on the board?
Yeah. I don't, I don't think by any means Tammy needs to type hours worth of, of minute, you know, words. I just think that we need to ask some clarification to what the question was. I don't know if that's good enough.
That's a lot to ask, but you do have a complete record.
And there is, um, I don't know if anyone else took it, but that, that the meeting, public meeting laws, and we all, the meeting I've taken, so I joined that and they did make some changes to minutes. I might have to go back and look at my notes, um, at what does have to go in them. There are some changes, but I don't think there's anything to that level. We just finally ran into this where we actually don't have a video recording. So
That wasn't a meeting, that was a work session.
It's still a public meeting you have to have.
Jen, any thoughts from you?
Sorry, trying to unmute. This thing is not very user friendly. Um, I was going to go back and look at the public meetings law as well because I attended that and see what my notes stated as well. I do agree that I don't think, um, Tammy needs to be putting in a, you know, paragraph upon paragraph upon paragraph. So, um, I guess you're right. It hasn't become an issue until just recently. Um, so I guess we just need to look further into it to see how much we want in there, um, if it's just the basic question. Um, or, or, you know, two questions or whatever, you know, it is. I know there's always, um, you know, sometimes questions get lost. There's like multiples of them. So, um, I mean, we can, we can double check the notes and see what they say.
My, my thoughts are when you, when the questions frame the debate, that isn't the debate that you have.
Right.
And the debate defines your vote eventually. And so if you don't put any debate in there, how would anybody ever know why you voted the way you did? So maybe a little more detail gets to those questions. They are important. I, I might not vote against them because of the way the question was answered.
Right.
Uh, so probably important to establish that, remember, without creating hours that.
Yeah, it's like
Is there a way to bump it a bit?
Well, if it's videos.
Without, you know. Be hard.
I don't know if you could change it to, you know, like board instead of like, it, it always says clarifying question, maybe the board asked whatever the topic is, you know, a question about this or a test.
I agree. I think that would
You know, that's simple, but at least it gives you what the question about. Yeah, like a general theme, what was the question about?
Ask a question about the resolution.
Yeah.
Different ideas or the timeline.
Yeah.
I'm just, just trying to think about Tammy and
Yeah, exactly.
So can we treat that as feedback to staff? Not do a motion, see how staff adjusts and we can talk about this again.
We would need your input, Tammy, but tell us what is, you know, what's going to be doable and what's not when we're running meetings. Um, I think that would be kind of tested out. Yes, it's really going to affect you.
I can, so I can begin elaborating and then see if you guys like the amount including if you want more and then we'll just do it a couple of months in the weekend.
Okay.
If that works for you.
Okay.
Yeah, that's great.
Awesome. Thanks for your collaboration. Raising that. Okay, Dr. Ha, four point one, proposed policy procedure. We've just received this today.
Uh, yeah, this was a request for the October twenty first work session. Uh, so Chris is pulling up the slide. It's, it's a power slide. So the board speaking, you know, falling off on ways the board would like us to operate. Try to make this as simple as possible by putting in, I ordered a lot of burritos. So I tried to think of this as ordering a burrito. So if you take the, uh, if you take the chart, there's colors on it. Let's get those slides up there. There were two requests from the board coming out at work session. They said, uh, let's come up with a policy procedure that one um, allows for legal review, uh, prior to, uh, asking you guys to adopt something. So essentially you wanted our E S D attorneys to make sure that your questions were answered, any legal questions prior to, uh, prior to bringing it back for a second reading. And then also, uh, this idea of the board as we, as we potentially use work sessions, the board, uh, wanted to make sure that we had adequate time from where we do a first review to adopt it. So that way the board would have time, staff would have time, as well as the community have time to review on those processes. So taking, uh, those requests and, uh, laying out a menu of options that you guys can decide how you want to move forward. So if you look at the top of your chart, just that blue box back, background and preparation. So OSBA, they release quarterly, um, a policy update that's typically five to fifteen required or recommended policies. Uh, this, this policy update list is typically based on the legislature. Required or recommended policies, um, this, this policy update list is typically based on the legislature. Uh, it's they have, this gets sent to Tammy. Uh, from there, the superintendent, uh, reviews that quarterly list. And identifies, hey, these are the policies that we need to bring to the board to review. Um, this is all part of policy. So from there, Doctor Skinner's able to say, hey, here's, here's the five, the ten policies that we need the board to review. And there, with, with this board, we haven't had a clear procedure that we want to use, um, so I listed. What we've done in the past and seen what. Either follow a procedure from the past or kind of create a hybrid procedure, so. Option A, the green box, this would be a standard routine, a monthly adoption. Where, uh, the superintendent or destiny would bring three or five policies each month to the regular board meeting, uh, for a first review. Uh, those could have been, um, already reviewed by legal counsel as needed. From there, as part of the first reading, uh, this would be at every regular board meeting. Uh, you guys would be able to ask questions, comments, concerns, what edits, you know, typically we don't take action on first readings. After that first reading, then, uh, the superintendent would work with legal counsel as necessary, as well as C C S D staff. To make any board requested refinements. And then at the next regular board meeting, so thirty, essentially thirty days later, we bring that back. Uh, policy V F allows, uh, when necessary. Uh, in the best interest of the district, the board can adopt any policy at first reading, but they can still, so that would be one option to do it. Regularly at the regular board meetings, bring three to five. We know that that is idealistic and typically. We might get a backlog, so another format that we used in the past is, uh, option B, the yellow box. Work session format for policy backlogs. So when a significant backlog exists, you know, greater than ten or greater than fifteen. Um, the superintendent would recommend to the board that we do a work session. Uh, and then we'd follow that same process essentially where, um, prior to the first reading, they'd get a quick, uh, look over from, um. Legal counsel as necessary, we'd bring those to the board as the first reading. Uh, we'd get your guys' feedback from the first reading, then from there. Here's where you see in that blue, it's a after no less than fourteen days, cuz if we are doing a work session, it could come back quicker, but we make sure to not do that. Um, in under fourteen days, it's that supplement that the board said they, they, it's a priority for them. Uh, and then we could adopt those at, at a regular board meeting or another work session. So that's another option, that work session. Option number three, uh, is that orange box, uh, board policy committee routine. So this is where, um, the board could, uh, establish a board appointed policy committee in alignment with policy B C E. Um, to review the existing recommended policies and then make recommendations to the board. Uh, so, uh, that would be something, uh, we'd have to follow all public meeting laws. Uh, and they would have that first plans to make, make the edits and then bring that for a first reading of the board. It would help kind of cut through a lot of the questions initially, that's the efficiency of it, um, and then, uh, first reading. Just like the other sessions, we take the board's feedback, get legal counsel as necessary, and then bring back policies based on the board's, um. Requested information for a second reading and potential adoptions. So those would be three different options that we've seen, uh, that we've used as a board. To, to, uh, review the top policies.
There's only, um, there's only number two for allowing the public time to open them.
Well, if you keep in mind, so option one, it'd be at every regular meeting, so it'd be, it'd be thirty days no matter what, so we would work. So we would make sure, um, for all of these that there is never under fourteen days.
Cuz if it comes back at a, at a board meeting, you have, you have, yeah.
I'm not quite sure what you're proposing. Are you proposing? A and B? Or? See, the question.
I'm presenting a menu of options. I assume it would be A with a supplement, but B, that's what I would think. It's completely, this is how the board wants us to bring policies.
Yeah, our work session where we have that, I think we have what, twelve? And we have more than ten. That, that's a nightmare because some of those policies have. Twenty-five O R Ss, O A Rs, um, so I don't think regularly having work sessions, ten to twenty policies deep. Cuz they have to come back then to board meetings, so then you're gonna have to add them to board meetings three and five at a time, so I think I agree with Stephen's thought. We're gonna have to kind of mix A and B, but. I, the last work session we had with the amount of policies we had, that. It was, it was nuts, and then you gotta go back and, and, and read what they're referencing. We had one that wasn't even the right O R S. That totally, so I think legal going through them first, um, will cut down on some of that. But I think you're right, Steve, we're gonna have to mix A and B. I think C puts a lot of work on two specific board members. Extra to come back to the board meeting. Um, so I. So I would, I think, um. I think the work sessions are hard when it, when it's ten to twenty policies. I do agree with bringing, you know, roughly three a month, if you get it through legal. Prior, so we can start checking all of the actual statutes and the, the language from the statutes that we're not somehow carrying over. Um, I.
And when you say legal, you're just asking them to ref- make. Cross check the O R Ss at the bottom of making sure it actually applies to the policy that you're putting.
In a nutshell, yeah, cuz one of those policies, if we would have just adopted it, it doesn't even reference the right O R S and we're not. I mean, I'm not comfortable in the legal realm of adopting, you know, I get they go with these house bills and legislative, but I'm, I'm not. Any first and legal background, so I would prefer having an attorney do it back and back.
Well, and then if we wordsmith policies. Are they in accordance with the O R S?
Yeah.
The law, so then if we get sued, O S B doesn't stand by us. And I realize, oh, we've ended up our policies and then we change the language and I just add notch to the O R S and does that put the district in a. It just, it, it puts us in a bad position of convenience, so. We only have three to five a month early, three. Then it's easier to just kind of check, I mean, cuz you can check the O R Ss yourself, you just have a minute. Go through it real quick, but there's so many things that we've gone through like that one work session, O S B had seven that don't match. So then it just becomes like, oh my gosh, is this overwhelming to have twenty? Keep on the regulars. If you have it, and then we revise it and bring it to the next one, then there's more revisions.
But I think you would have to.
So then it's just three, six, nine, twelve, you know, so we just have to really keep.
But you would have to almost make sure that legal could have been a ten, the board needs coming to, because if we wanted to wordsmith. Or change the language to what we would like, we need to make sure that that is in line with the statute that we're changing the policy to reference. And that's the part we're missing.
So, and I think in talking with, um, legal, one of the. Studios, I don't think of as an attorney is. Typically giving them on the spot legal advice, the board would have to vote to waive their attorney client privilege. So, uh, she recommended more of this, getting all the questions between the, after the first reading. Getting that and then getting that back to the board, not live, but that way she could do a thorough, uh, legal analysis, so. Making sure all the board's legal questions are answered between the first and second reading.
What, what if you added a third reading? That you would only trigger if you added language. And then you would send it back to legal, so they would have one more shot to redo it, you'd have to re-adopt on the second time.
I would be okay, I.
Use that unless you were adding like.
Yeah, okay, I think that, that would work.
Third, you're allowed, then there are remaining language change to be referred back.
Yeah.
And the other piece that I think is important is. If you're gonna start with staff and legal review, that's fine. You get two kinds of policies, you get the required and you get the recommended. And the full board at some point needs to see the summary of all the required and recommended. So that if staff chooses not to move forward with one, we want to reach back out, pull it back up.
Yeah.
We have that opportunity to do a chronological edit. Because otherwise, staff may just say, well, I'll do that, so they eliminate it, we say, well, we want you to do that, we bring it back.
And it might be something where you prioritize the three a month, you know, you get through your required, then you go to the recommended, you know, then it's the backlog.
Maybe, these come in quarterly, I think.
Oh, yeah, that's right, April and October, right?
There's debate around that. However, frequently they got it. Just copy the, that or, or forward the email, let us see the pattern.
And then making sure that the public has that ability to review them, give feedback as well in case there's. Something with this.
Is anyone brave, brave enough to take all of what we just said and put into some sort of motion? Or should staff just take?
You should take that and you should go right and just have to bring it back next month.
I like that.
Because we have.
Do you prefer some color or chart?
I think you're gonna have to mix A and B and that would be a very pretty color, Joel, so. We prefer blue and gold.
Actually, there's no color because it says it's a page and he already.
All right. Uh, he, we're going to need the C P A safety threats, we would. Okay.
There were questions. I apologize, I wasn't in the last work session, but guys, I'm through this one. My E D C A, there were questions around the word secure. Versus what's in the O R S, which says lockout. So about three years ago. Regionally, well, actually nationally. Everybody changed. Where we lock out to secure. Because there's so much confusion around the word lockdown and lockout. The O R S is.
It's still in the O R S.
I know, I know, I know. So, so the O R S is just, is completely outdated. But, but what the, the policy says secure and the intent. Is exactly the same as what it was. So the language, the, the language does not have to be exact from an O R S. As long as the intent. And the legal requirement is there. And that is the case with the word secure and shelter. If you replace the two.
Yeah, and I think I'm, I mean, I'm just uncomfortable not having the exact word of verbiage because like as attorneys, we want to know your words matter. And in some of these with like. The issue of having like older buildings like Kirk County Middle School and. Uh, which I think is actually the next policy, um. Anyway, um, I, I prefer just to match the O R S because I don't wanna get the, get ourselves in a good ball.
I would caution matching the O R S on the word lockout. It's dangerous. We train to the word secure. Regionally, everybody trains for the word secure. Everything about that procedure process, keys on the word secure instead of lockout.
So I think this is where we could use our. Third, what did you say, third line, third reading, and I think you take this to like as your E S D. And because Cheyenne is saying it doesn't match the federal statute, Leland is saying everyone nationally trains to this wording, but. Let's, let's, because we are ultimately held responsible. Not anybody else, but we can put Scott.
Yeah, I like it. Yeah, the new board is secure. My last paper didn't disappear, so I mean.
It's just hard, I agree, Cheyenne, the federal statute did not change with everyone, so we need to find out why federally. It didn't change, I think, and I think that's where legal could give us feedback.
I look forward to it.
All right.
Uh, yeah, well, and, and I think there's a bigger issue here, Cheyenne saying, what about? When the policy language doesn't match work or word in O R S and some clarification on. What that looks like is what I heard, the, the kind of bigger issues.
Yeah, well, because we're like, nobody will stand by us, like, nobody stands by their policies, and so we buy the policies from O S B A. And if we get sued, they, they, they're like, oh, you're on your own, like you. But if, if, if we see that it's not matching up to the O R S federally, like, we need to figure out equally like. Why aren't they changing it federally in the O R S?
Why are we even bringing better? O R S is just.
Yeah, well, it's not, the verbiage is not exactly.
But it's not exactly, but if everybody else is doing the same thing, you're gonna. But that sound like we wanna move forward tonight, E D C A, is that right?
I would just like.
Prefer that one off to legal. Bring that back, E V C V, is it during the stage? Same issue?
Yeah. Yes, I just wanna double check on those two.
Then both goes away. Graduation requirements, which is I K F.
Well, I got a big problem with this one. Okay.
All right, let me explain what it is first.
Um, I K F are graduation requirements that we have as our policy. So Senate Bill five thirteen and Senate Bill three in the last couple of years updated graduation requirements. Uh, to make sure that we have a half a credit of civics or government as a requirement, as well as a half a credit. Personal finance education and a half a credit as a career. Always get the acronym wrong, the career related or career. Higher education and career path skills as standalone. So, I updated, you're gonna see updates in language on the standard diploma on page two dash eight. Updates on the modified diploma on three dash eight. And updates on the honors diploma on five dash eight. Where we have the language. That goes along with what the legislation, which the legislature requires.
So on November nineteenth, at three o'clock, they're holding a meeting. Uh, O D D is holding a meeting to discuss this. These requirements, and then they're gonna make a final decision in December. On modifying these requirements.
Which ones?
So on, on all of them, so it looks like. I got all of it, it's on the whole policy in general, on all of the diplomas, the grading. Everything, but in O, O A R five eighty-one, point oh two two, it starts in the two thousands. These, this policy is missing a lot of language, like parental notification, modifying diplomas. So they're not, I'm just wondering why they're not putting all the language in there, and it seems like we're prematurely adopting this. If it's gonna go to a meeting when they're gonna do a meeting on the nineteen. And then they're gonna get public input and they're gonna make the final decision in December. So it seems like we should look at this policy after it goes through all of those. Processes and have access in January. Because there's just some legal things happening with this, it'd be so into adoption. Because they're gonna be making changes in December.
This doesn't affect one.
This is gonna affect till twenty twenty seven.
So. The one part that does go into effect is that the civics requirement is toward this. Twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-four, twenty-five graduating year, so that was earlier, um. You know, twenty-five, twenty-six, but if we have early graduates. So it's the year that they started in ninth grade, and so if we have graduates at the end of this year, we need to make sure that they do have their half credit in civics, which. Ninety-nine percent of our kids do because it just is the traditional. It is the traditional map, it impacts some of our kids, maybe a pioneer or early graduates. Who they haven't always, like, as part of their three social studies credits, most of them take civics, but it hasn't been. Those three parts of social science has not been inclusive of civics. We have always made an inclusive of civics because that's our course. But statewide, it does need to be civics until then.
If we wait until after November, that came the difference, except for not one kid, it's gonna be affected.
So kids that graduate after trimester one, wouldn't it be affected? Is that in?
No, we've already, we've already made sure that kids are on that after early graduation. Make sure that they have a civics, a half a credit civics, a hundred percent market, so it won't impact them. But I wasn't aware that there's another meeting at eleven nineteen, all the webinars and everything that I did this summer and fall.
It's November nineteenth at three o'clock. And they'll take the public comment, and then reconvene in December. So that what really concerns me about this is O S B A took out all the language for parental. Rights and parental notification. It's in the O A R, but it's not, they did not spell it out, so that.
Can I spread a notification about early graduation or about these courses or about?
It's about parental notification about the requirements for, it's, it's with everything. There's this very specific language, um. Like with modified diplomas and different requirements, it doesn't put in there as a parents are notified or changes. They just left that language out. So I just wanna make sure that, I don't know why, but this is another.
Yeah, it might be too complicated somewhere else.
Yeah, and I don't know why, but it was like, that's why we need to have legal look at things like this to say, hey, it's, why are they not putting in all the language? Yeah, and I don't know why, but it was like, that's why we need to have legal look at things like this to say, hey, it's all right. Why are they not putting in all the language? Why are they picking which one language they put in? It could be very simple. Like it's put some.
Shane, just to clarify. There's likely not going to be changes to the half credit of personal finance and. The courses that are required, it is the other pieces in this policy that are included in I K F. That may have changes.
Yeah, well, I don't know exactly every change is going to make this, that I mean, it has been told November nineteenth, so I have no idea what's going to be presented. I just know there's some meeting on this policy.
Could you find the O A R? Talking about.
It's showing on five eighty-one.
Okay.
Point zero two-two, and it starts in the two dots. Where there's missing language.
Yeah, all those.
Now, there's, there's a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot that deal with graduation requirements.
There's, I mean, I think it, I.
On the backside, it's like fifteen.
Specifically query O S B A supply. That's the one. Oh, or we can take, I just pull up. So we've got eight references to. To parents in that current, we didn't change any, we didn't take any.
I didn't take any parents.
The only addition. On this policy was the civics credit and the personal finance credit.
Yeah.
But we can go back because. Yeah.
It's like even on the second paragraph, the district will award a diploma to a student fulfilling graduation requirements in less than four years of consent as received by the student's parent or guardian or by the student if they are eighteen years of age or older or emancipated in the modified. Diploma, there's the parental notification and the extended diploma, there's the parental notification. Those still all exist.
Well, we can definitely.
Yes, I will.
Bring that and bring it back because we, we wouldn't want to remove any. Parental qualification, um, especially on things like modified diplomas or I P's. We, we want them to be in the. So.
But I don't, I don't see the parent in the first paragraph under modified diploma. I don't see there is. Oh, after.
Yeah, it's on the bio on four eight. Right above said diploma, getting in grade five or beginning after documented history to qualify for a modified diploma. The district shot annually provided to the parents or guardians of the student information about the availability and requirements of a modified diploma. And same thing, um, on the end of extended diploma as well.
Okay.
Okay.
So you're going to bring that.
I will bring it back. I will.
You go to the webinar on the over nineteen.
Yep.
I, I had a minor question about this one. So under the honors diploma number four, where it says three credits of social studies, which must include, and you have the one half credit, it's in blue, the one half credit U S civics. Slash A P and may include. So they get a choice. Do they have to have the half credit of U S civic and A P government? Like the way I read that is you have to have both plus you may pick A or, or B or C.
Well, so the way the S B five thirteen reads is they read it as they call it civics the entire way through. You can either call the course civics, but again, it's the intent is that your, your people have U S government or U S civics. So we don't want all of our kids to take A P government to have to take an additional half credit. Of U S civics. So that's where the slash is, but I can clear that up. So I can say half credit of U S civics or. A P government.
So both of those count, count.
Yep.
But then you say may include world cultures or U S history. So are those also going to be considered the half credit of U S civics?
No, so that's to get all of their. Social studies credits. So it has to include. Governments. Whether, whether you call it civics or whether you call it government. And then a full year of world cultures, a full year of U S history, and then on the back. To get their three total. Another half credit of government.
So. Sorry, Carrie. Just so for honors diploma, they need a half credit of U S civics, a full credit of world cultures, a whole credit of U S history, and then a half credit of world government.
Yes.
So can you scratch out that may? Because if you have, I think I understand what you're saying, but.
Yeah.
The, the Austin flu, and then you said, well, it may include this.
So they, but they have to have.
But you have to have.
I think. If we offered another social studies course, like criminal justice or psychology, it could also. They. Well, we have in the past. That's what I'm saying.
Oh, my daughter has it. They're trying this.
Yes. So it couldn't be. Another social studies credit. I just can't, I can't predict what we might offer for social studies or what it is.
Why isn't it just three additional?
It, yeah.
Credits.
It can be.
We don't care about which program it is.
So the only one that's a must is a half credit is civics. Everything else is a requirement for the honors diploma. Is that? Am I understanding that correctly? It can be anything as long as they need the total credits. For social.
Yeah, the one question I have on that is if U S history. Let me go back and look at whether U S history is a. Is a must.
And that may all change with whatever's going on the meeting. I don't know, but I would just confuse them if those were musts or.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I can clean up that language.
Okay.
Following the theme of the evening to be continued.
And then I would want to clean that up and all.
We're going to be two meetings in December. You have to read this.
No, that was talking about the cut out January.
That was saving up the three, that could have reached six times. This is the backlog.
Probably can for January, right?
Yeah.
Cause it sounds like they're taking public comment and they won't come back till December. So then you would, you'd need time to figure out. Yeah.
Let's, let's see if we can adopt this one policy. Guys, we're over three.
This one's not tight enough.
All right, boys, just now this one we're just bringing forward. This is a first book language for this year. Yes, so put it, move it in the box. So if, so if you remember, uh, the high school dramatically increased their cell phone, um, policy this year where their cell phone rules. Um, where students can only have their cell phone before school, after school, at lunch, and in passing periods. It cannot be out, uh, during class time without the principal's permission. So.
And it says teacher. So this is my problem with this policy.
You tell me which.
So it says, uh. It's being, it's by the principal or designated. Don't you mean on number two, uh, number four, number four? If the permission is received from the student's teacher. So.
Oh, that's, that's if it's in their I M P or five oh four.
But that wouldn't come from the teacher. That would come, that's.
So my, my concern with this is I do understand that kids have to have cell phones. Like if they have, um. Diabetes or, you know, they're, they're monitoring and stuff like that. I also think. That if they're in a class like photography, because we do not provide cameras or photography, then that like would be an exception because I don't know the way of the money to buy all the cameras and whatnot. And I get that, but the language in here is really loosey goosey and it leaves it up to the discretion of the teacher. Which then could really give favoritism like. There's, there's just, there's a lot of loose language. It seems like everything should be the same for every student with the exception of. Medical necessities and things like that, but. It, it lists times that you can have it in class and then. It says it, it references the school rules, but doesn't tell you what the school rules are. And it leaves just a lot of. Dictation up to the teacher. So it looks like the teacher can give permission, permission, but that leaves.
Shane, I'm going to try to get one policy passed. So I, I, if I'm looking at two, uh, it says unless. As authorized in advance by the principal or designated for health or safety reason. Or in the event of an emergency situation that involves physical danger, devices shall be turned. On and operated only before and after the regular school day. The only time a teacher has discretion is when it's, uh, the circumstance you brought where it hit this I I P for like diabetes or something. Or the principal has given permission for the like photographer stuff. Outside of that, teachers have no discretion. To say you can use your, your phone. Only, and I think legally. Only. We have to say if it's on I E P or five oh four, we have to allow that. Other than that, um, it's only authorized by the principal.
So I think you might want to clean up forward then, Joel.
We just take out that permission.
You need to take out the end of.
Just take out.
The in the board thing.
Could be adopted as amended.
What's the punishment? What's the punishment if you disobey? He said he was going to get mine because I told him.
Is there not anything like if you disobey this?
Yes.
It says school rules, but it doesn't say what.
So, so typically this is the A R. Um, so we typically wouldn't put like specific consequences from what I know happens at the high school. The, uh, the teacher has or the student, if they're caught with it. In class. Then, uh, the student has to take it down to the office. They get a slip. That they take back showing that they brought it and then the student can pick it up at the end of the day. Um, and then I think repeated offenses become like comedians with the administrator and probably up to. You know, probably some lunch detentions or, or something out of theirs.
But my concern, this is mainly for the teachers because. Last year I was told that, oh, we're going to do this. No, no, no cell phone and nobody ever did anything and it wasn't a by to by. And my. Daughter and her friends specifically send that. They snatch out their teachers and they, and I, I think it's a violation for teachers' rights as well of like. Uh, it's disrespectful and they're shopping during class and they are. Uh, students, you know, cheating, looking at answers on for things. And so. It's very, it's just, it's very distracting to the learning environment. And I just want to make sure that the language is.
Where do the cell phones go?
Yeah.
Like, what is it?
Does it have it in a pocket? Do they, because there was a discussion of like bags? Like when you go to a concert, you didn't, and I don't know, we don't have the money for that, but. Are they even, does, does the teacher put them in a basket?
Yes, so I believe, uh. What I've heard is there's those, um, slip. E, each classroom.
Like the shoe rack.
Yes, where you put your, put your phone in. Um, I think others have, uh, baskets. Um, I, I think it's pretty simple of like, it needs to be away. So if it's not turned off from their back end, that needs to be one of those slips or a basket. Uh, but I think it's. Very by classroom for that. So, so far, the only amendment pending is to strike. From number four, everything from or permission is received from the student's teacher.
So what?
I think we need to put a four in front of the five.
I think you're going to have to. You have to also change two because in here it says unless authorized in advance by the principal or designated for health or safety reasons. Or in the event of an emergency situation. That involves imminent physical danger, devices shall be turned. Turned on and operated only before and after regular school day. Didn't you say they could have them in passing periods and lunch? Uh, that's not in here.
How's that next sentence?
Oh, personal electronic devices may be used during the lunch break. Okay, sorry, I missed the last one.
And do we put anything in there about non-supplements or?
So what happens? I guess that's the thing. So then. This is the A R. I get that. So. Isn't there usually a process to how you uphold the?
To go into the specifics of like you get a lunch detention or.
Well, like what do you do with this? Like, I think what Shiana's saying is like, okay, well, if a student just. Doesn't want to do it, well, then what? Do they go, what process do you go through to?
It's kind of number eight who talks about the return of the student.
Yeah, but that doesn't, that's just. I mean, you may want some language in there like appropriate discipline. Appropriate discipline, appropriate. Repeat defense will be taken to ensure compliance with. Yeah, it is, it is in the guidance document sent home to parents. My, my concern is that as we have amended this, there is no ability to use the phone for academic. And there is occasionally available. Like. Yeah, or even, you know, they're, they're like when they play capoeira or when playing. Minimeter or something.
Yeah, they do have during ELO period at the high school, they have the game. Did somebody else swim it? Yeah, the welding is uploading to their. Portfolio. I'm going to take pictures of their projects along the way when they're welding.
Don't ask me again, but watch coming at it. All right, guys, I was, I was trying to get a. I'm going to bring something back. It's going to have, um, academic first, uh, purposes as well as some sort of consequence language, um, in, in the A R. Is that?
Yeah, I just think we want to make sure that there's, it doesn't leave it open to like. Favoritism, like everybody's just treated equally the same. And I don't, no, we want that to fall fully on the teacher's plate. Maybe that administrative role is probably better where it's. Set guidance to the whole school. And then you might have classes like stop right up like photography where. Then that administrator talks to that teacher and says, hey, for purposes of this class, you know, cell phone. Whatever are allowed during the period or however they dictate that. But then it's not on the teacher's plate. You know, where the kid's like, why can't I have my phone? You know, it's all. This is why.
Academic purposes like photography, consequence language and fairness to all.
And then I do know the games that Scott brought up. They play those during the ELO. Um, if they don't, you know, if they have good grades and they don't have to go work on work, they do have. Um, in the comments area, they, that is a game they play that cahoots.
It's a learning tool.
Yeah.
Cahoots can be in classroom. It's like quizzes. Yeah. They say, oh, my answer's A, my answer's C, and then the teacher says, oh, thirty-nine percent of the class chose A.
Okay. So. Look for that.
Right, I see. And I, I was feeling good about this one. All right, we'll bring it back. Feel a work session coming on. All right. Finance report, Diana. It's up to you.
Okay.
Okay, so the financial report, I was a handout. Do the financial report. The reasoning, um, on the financial report, everyone can start on page three. That's the general fund statement of revenue expecters. Um, so you know, I do a projection. I'm showing what's happened so far, but then I estimate to, to the end. In my projection, I'm, it's, I'm. Showing that. Basically, our revenue expenses are going to go to be really close to budget. Um, but as I mentioned last week, the beginning of fund balance, you'll see, we needed that to be two million dollars. That's nine twenty. And what really go for is two million. Two million and six hundred and thirty. And so that's where the. Funds are coming from for the resolution and with who that we're actually. But. So I wanted to just kind of give you that. This is one very from the last month. Um, the next thing I wanted to show you was page ten, because this is not normally in the map. This is just once a year informational. Um, to show. How last year kind of closed out. So the ending fund balance last year was higher than budgeted. And so the excess balance above. What we needed to roll forward. Was moved out into other funds. And so this is the list of all the places where money was moved into. There's a list there. You've seen something like this before. Last year, actually, you saw something like this that was forty-four before. Then I added in the middle, there's an informational thing that shows. Our ending fund balance before we did the transfers out, out was about five point two million dollars. And then, so we were able to transfer out two point six million. Giving us an ending fund balance of two million six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We needed two million. So that saves us six hundred and thirty thousand. But we can add to this year's expenditures. And then the next thing I added was historically how much money has. Been excess fund balance. And. You can see last year, the, the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, even the last was the highest it's ever been. And I mentioned several times that there was. Just really unusual. Things that happened that year. Some of those things carried forward to twenty-three point four, which is why, um, we were, we transferred out two point six million. But I don't foresee that going on. Into public truth. So that's the. That's intended one hundred percent. Questions on the financial report?
So I have some questions on page ten, Anna. So, um, this might be you too, Leland, but there's a couple line items. So we have the, um. Stadium locker room. On that list, that hundred and twenty-two thousand. Is that a projection of work we're doing or is that was needed to upkeep something at the stadium or?
That.
Projection for a renovated.
And. I. Not that that's not needed either, but didn't we have issues with the roof out there? Not that that's not needed either, but didn't we have issues with the roof out there or the bleachers out there? Or something, or did that get taken care of?
It was fixed. There was a seismic issue that like.
Yeah.
Years ago.
Yeah.
We went through and fixed that, spending three fifty thousand dollars, it was. I made repairs to that at that time.
Okay. Okay, and then my other one, Anna, is this athletic fund to cover deficit, it's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Could you kind of give us? What does into that?
Uh, so we estimate at the beginning of the, when we build a budget, we estimate how much it will cost to fund everything that the district funds. For athletics and this, uh, and then what ended up happening is. Transportation costs were. A lot higher than. Because of. The shortage of drivers, the recruiting and retention issues we've had with drivers and your drivers came on our path. Um, we've had issues where. There were. No drivers available to do a trip. Our only options were. Don't let the kids go on trip. Let them drive themselves and have their parents do it. We have been given. From previous board members, um. Out of the guidance that that's not acceptable, um. And then the third option was to do a charter. So charters, uh, that's like an outside busing company, they provide a bus and a driver and then they come back. The students, the athletes up and take them to the, to then to bring them back.
Also, as I recall, had extraordinary number of winning teams extended seasons, you know, they were.
Yes, we did.
Regionals in state, yay.
Yes.
Problem, but that played a part, so we want a budget.
Thank you for that too, that.
Extensive to win.
We have, uh, we have some money that we also have put towards assisting the teams with postseason, postseason. Competitions like state. They're just going to state and. When we did that, we based it off of kind of historical, how many teams should officially go to state and then every single team states.
So. Us, and how much is the cost of charter these buses?
Depends on how far it is, um, so I've seen fourteen hundred dollars, I've seen five thousand dollars. This depends because if they go somewhere with the penalty, they have to have two drivers because of the laws about how. Drivers can only drive for a certain, certain amount of time instead of them to switch drivers, so yeah, it's expensive.
So. My concern with this is one, we just purchased, was it three eighty-four passenger buses for this two, for this exact. Reason, right, for sports, the car that goes through and. So how much are we, I guess. Stuff, would that be stuff letting, how much are we outsourcing um, compared to? We're actually covering up the district utilizing our own.
So that's two buses we bought will be placed in the buses, they're not efficient. But when we charter buses, the first option is to try and actually work with another district. And use their buses if they have the drivers or vehicles available, much cheaper. Um, but everybody's short drivers. So when that doesn't work, we have like a really trip like Anna was talking. The only option. At, at this point even right now, that with our shortage of drivers would be to charter. Charter, charter.
So I answer your question, we're definitely doing more trips, a lot more trips in-house than we do charter. I don't have that number twice.
So a question, um. We've had it come up in the past, just um. With different sporting events where you have say, a mom or parent, a dad that. Um, we have lots of employees in the district that have kids, um. You know, that say go on a wrestling trip. And they're going, or as a parent, right, they're going. Um, it sounds like maybe there's some language in contracts that might need to be looked at where that parent can't take away. A trip for another driver even though they're going. And we ran into predicaments where they're taking time off to go watch a wrestling event or that whatever sport it is. And they're not able to drive the bus that they can. Because there's some verbiage or language in a contract, um. Is this the case, is that, is there something in a contract that states like a driver is given?
So yes, classified.
Classified, is that something that maybe we could look at, um? Where it's, it's not, if we don't have, if we have a shortage in drivers, obviously we don't wanna take away a trip from somebody that can go. That could make that trip, but it sounds like it's kind of starting to offset where. I know we ran into that predicament this summer, I've had two other trips, um. Where there's parents that actually have a CDL, they have the ability to be a driver. Um, and they're not able to do that even if they went and got on with our bus barn as just a trip. Driver like for trips, because that's also not a position. Yeah, so but substitute drive, it's, I, so I'm not familiar with the contract language, so is that something that could be looked at? As a district that maybe we could come up with some options that might alleviate some of these?
I'm working it, I completely, I'm trying to completely build a system.
Okay.
That we could work within, so we don't have to, to do any charters. And that's, that's how ideally, that's the perfect world.
Okay.
But I'm working on it, there's, there's a lot of things there, so one, those parents and those people that have the CDL. They need to actually call me in and apply for a job, because they have to have a school bus certificate too.
Yeah.
CDL doesn't just get it.
So those parents with CDLs don't wanna go pay the cost to have the S endorsement to travel with students. When the job goes to a driver that is already in line, there's apparently verbiage within a contract that states. You can't take that from a driver, so I'm asking, can we look at that because? At that point, you know, the parent to get the S endorsement within, you know, obviously need to come drive, you know, get. Get signed off to go to D and B to get that, but we have. Community members that are parents and, and I mean, there's some that currently work for the district. That could also carry some of these trips and I've heard there's a hangup with the contract language.
There's a, there, there is, there are issues with the classified employees contract. But there's, there's other things that I'm, there's things that I'm working on.
Okay.
I'm really working on a system so that this minimizes what that costs to be to the district.
Okay. I, I would be curious to see your ideas.
I'm always open for other ideas, so I mean, I, I, I appreciate you giving me the feedback because I will use that feedback.
Yeah, I didn't know that was a thing, I, I didn't know that until it sounds like parents have looked into that when going on these trips, I mean. I don't know anyone else. I, I, I don't know schedules fully, but I know wrestling travel distances, you know, we go to Reno, we go to Idaho. That sort of a thing when you have multiple parents with CDLs in that group, so. I.
So, so. We, we still have an open classified contract that we're actively bargaining. I think we should move on from this conversation, maybe have that offline. Before we get into issues we don't talk.
Okay. So it's after six.
Yeah.
Okay, so should I move on?
I didn't know.
Okay, if I put to his budget committee, uh, we have one. One open position, which is previously held by Susan Crawford, the reason the position is open is simply because it's fireable. Um, so the process would be that the board officially declares that the position is open if I send it a. Of those motion. That's the board declares it is open and publish, we'll, we'll put something probably on Facebook and on our website. Cause then we have an open position, if Susan Crawford wants to make five, she's wanting to, and anyone else who wants to. One to five.
I move to declare budget committee position ten as open.
Motion, the second declare budget ten, budget committee, this number can't open, any discussion, all the voters say aye, Adrian.
Aye.
Rachel Carrie's. Budget calendar.
Budget calendar is by home grade, it varies against a similar format as in the past. I did make sure the lines could be rolled forward, holds timeline. Adopted. I am aiming for committee approval in May and board adoption in June. Usually I try to have me uh, adopt it in May, which is a bit. Faster in the morning if it's due, but within the legislative session. Um, with the. There's one that I decided.
So May sixth is not a Sunday. The Tuesday, I just wanna make sure we're not coming in on Sunday to do our budget.
It says twenty twenty-nine.
Yes.
That's why, so once you fix that, okay, thank you for that.
I assume the year you figure out, but I was like, I'm not coming in on Sunday, so. So I don't know if you need. The, in order for it to be adopted, can we just amend it?
Yes.
Okay.
I moved to adopt the budget calendar for the budget year twenty twenty-nine, twenty-six, as amended for the May six, twenty twenty-nine to do the right.
Motion, the second from Shiana, Jessica, Dr. Keller with the appropriate amendments pipeline. New discussions, the favor raised against it, aye.
Aye.
Oh, which Carrie, John, and. Uh, with a resolution.
Five point four is a proposed resolution for a supplemental budget. A supplemental budget can be approved by the board by resolution if it increases, if it doesn't increase a fund by November twenty-second. And this proposal is way less. Uh, so as I mentioned, there were unanticipated funds that moved forward and are available for spending only if we include appropriations. Appropriations and budget basically mean the same thing. Um, so what we're proposing here is to increase the appropriations, um. In the general fund by six hundred thirty thousand in the functions shown. So function one thousand three hundred and forty-three thousand by ninety-two, function two thousand two hundred and fifty-one thousand by ninety-two. Function three thousand by four thousand dollars. Uh, function fifty-two hundred by thirty thousand eight sixteen. And then also in the special revenue fund, um. On the back, on the back page of the reservation. Sorry, I'm trying to go fast.
Yeah, but I have all the, you have a break.
So I just made off in the change column. I just made off all those numbers. And now I'm down to the special revenue fund, we're at forty thousand dollars there. Um, I'm proposing that we increase that debt service line by fifty-one hundred. And remember when we were in the budget committee and I had the pages that were yellow? And I mentioned that if those are over budgeted, it's fine because you only spend what's available in that budget. So I could have brought to you a swap between software and um, transfers. But it's just easier to do one resolution altogether and increase all by thirty thousand. So basically what's happening in that one is. There was a accounting change. That basically makes us record certain software subscriptions as if they're debt. And so I just, as we were going through last year, it was the first year that I just didn't know how much the budget is software and how much the budget is debt service. And as we go through the year and realize, you know, when we do software rules. Fighting more than we can.
So. Right, Joel, where are we at on the grants for driver bed?
Grant specifically, so we gave about thirty-two hundred dollars trimester one, um, that came from. Grant called Ford Project. Trimester two, we have a two thousand dollar ODOT grant. Uh, that will, as people start, as students start registering, they will. Request a certain amount to be able to get that, so. Those are the two grants that we're bringing out, we've also put a grant through Meta. For uh, thirty-two thousand dollars to be driving simulators, that would double our driving simulator uh. capabilities. So those are the three grants I'm aware of around driver's head, um, and then we're completely. Offering a whole new free elective trimester two, um, and we're using, I think that comes from. The rollover to take a staff who is currently teaching three periods a day and extending his day to teach two more periods a day. Uh, to, to teach that free elective class. So, believe it or not, we're not at a quarterly board update, but we've made some progress on uh, driver's head. I'm still looking forward to reporting out on that.
So my only concern is, do we have the anticipated, so we have all sixteen. Again, in fall that have made it to playoffs, so have we. Budgeted or anticipated for our winning this season again this year, or do we need to? Maneuver something in this to help offset a deficit we may see again this year?
I would like to get a little further into the year and then make an explanation on that about that, because our budget was. Uh, basically the same. There was a small increase on the budget for athletics, but not, not like. Not to continue doing what it did before, right, so I think we aren't going to see an issue again. But that's something we could. Address as we go through, because we might. As we go through the year and. Um. As we, I'm projecting, I'm projecting a certain expenditure as we go through. In that projection. We have a bunch of unfilled positions and projecting that will be filled. Every month that goes by. Those positions aren't filled, is more money saved. That could potentially be transferred into athletics, so that problem could be solved. As we go on, but yes, you're absolutely right to be. That's a good problem, but also.
So, so what is the extra money for literacy supplemental materials and professional development?
So that is the money that I've requested so that we can look at increasing um, our, our literacy proficiency rate and that. Um, so that would be comprehensive comprehension toolkits and then books for reading, smaller construction with the teachers.
What do we need or can help already have? We have books and can.
Well, we don't have, the comprehension is extremely low. So I don't need our data right now, um, and we don't kind of, we haven't got. The slide, I mean, our, our I ready data right now is not looking very good. Uh, in terms of comprehension, so we need to work at a supplemental material resource and one of the ideas. Uh, the resources would be something called a comprehension toolkit. And so that will teach kids some of the cognitive skills to be thinking about their thinking. Um, and that's not something that we are seeing in our current resources, current resources that we have right now. Resources have gone down over the last year, so we're looking at trying to do something different to raise our scores.
These, these resources take or boost, our kids are struggling on literary comprehension and informational text comprehension. And these are designed to address those skills, so as we dug into our data, our phonics we're doing okay on, because a lot of our interventions. Address phonics, but we're not going deeper into comprehension, that's where we're getting killed, um.
Do you give some specifics on the I ready data, it's not like zero percent?
No, it's not that, it's not that bad, uh.
When you want to look down for standards, so when you want to get a standard.
Oh, certain, certain standards.
Yeah, so you're looking at standards, so like. Comprehension standards, so like main idea or summary or text features or text sets, yeah, text structures or. Sequence of events or did those like, those would be your kind of comprehension standards, there's multiple standards on those are that is. Quite look.
Yeah, and we have seen a few classes with zeros.
So I think one of the concerns, uh. Scott, that I have is I teach a class outside of school and I have a bunch of first graders. And then, and I have. Several students sign up in this school and they have been, what week are we in a school, week nine, I guess, week nine. The kids aren't even sick, they're still on that, it's like they uh, Viva, and then it's mainly. The program, I think Carrie addressed this a little bit last time, like when we had wonders, it was heavy on the reading. And so I was able to see some of the books that we do have. And they're not, like, they're not like the little readers that you would have seen like with the wonders where they're actually reading and putting their phonics together, like if they're still doing. Flash cards with A, Viva, C, H, like my kids did that in preschool, they were reading fluently by the end of kindergarten, so I think. The doctor Skinner is trying to get at is the books that they are offering. Are still very basic, like phonics based, they're not like fluent little readers, where you would be having them read, you know. Being able to read to the end of the book, and so you can't, when you're going K through three is. You know, like learning to read, but three through five is reading to learn. And so when you have third through fifth graders. That aren't able to comprehend, they're not reading to learn, they're still having. And so when you have third through fifth graders that aren't able to comprehend, they're not reading to learn, they're still having to go back to try and learn to read. And that should be caught up by third grade and our kids aren't caught up, so as you go beyond third grade. And they're not comprehending, it's setting them up for failure. So we have to get materials for the bonds, we just don't seem to have the new materials for actual reading, real. Yeah, they need to read, 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 there's the more they practice. Is this going to be a district wide expenditure or just, is this going strictly to. Um, I'm assuming elementary or K three or K through five, or what's our goal or K five? And so Dr. Skinner, is, is every school doing the same, and we. Uh, do this literacy supplement, so you're going to see the same thing at Barnes View, same thing at Steen's pillars, everything's other. So that all of our kids are getting the same little readers, yes. All three schools with the same.
Then the other question I had, Anna, for you, was, if I recall, the unfunded actual liability for the birds is three million. And we're proposing to put thirty thousand aside?
But six or seven of them serve as well, so what were, from the work from last year, we put sixty, something, sixty nine. Sixty nine thousand, so yeah, one hundred thousand dollars total. The.
Four to three million dollars. Does that feel light to you?
It does, but there also should be some revenue changes next year as well, so I think it's. It's just, I, I mean, yes, it'd be great to put more into the ledger and we can do that right on, on. Right now, in the budget for this year, we're setting aside thirty thousand dollars no matter what. That doesn't mean we can't set aside more as the end of the year, if we have more. You know, excess fund balance projected, I'm going to go with another reservation like this for another budget, little budget. And after the transfers out to be increased, and with that time we can prioritize. I think.
You're basing kale marriage, you're depending on increased age.
Not necessarily A and M, but. Yeah, and we may, we may have to cut some expenses too. Because what we're talking about is, right now, we're spending one time money on, basically one time things. As we move forward, the person that's going to me, year after year. And every wage increase that we do in contract negotiations, you know, verify the wage increase. That's going to have an impact plus the, the name based. We have to do that in.
Other questions about the resolution?
I, I move to adopt resolution zero three two, zero two four two zero two five.
Motion to adopt the resolution, we go to second. Steve, have we lost it or completely?
No, I'm here.
Okay.
It just keeps glitching out.
Alright, you're there, great, so are you ready to vote, Jen, did you get any que, have any questions?
Uh, I'm ready to vote, sir, thank you.
Any other discussion, all the big say aye, aye. Pose motion carries, okay, cool, did he have that? Uh, did we put out?
We did. They were upon this by the side of the sheet.
Okay. Um. So, this by may have quick announcement, the, um, there's no school November eleven. And no school, no school November, February first and twenty second, no school for Thanksgiving, February twenty fifth to twenty nine. And there's a school board meeting December ninth and a hugs and bugs event on December thirteenth, this year all signed up for.
Well, I'm going to ask this for you to actually.
Meeting is complete without signing. Okay, and we will be back in December to have this meeting half of it all over again, thank you very much for that, everybody. And we will recess to the executive session here, and we may come back in this to open session depending what happens. But like the plan, but maybe, so we'll get a recess, the, the open session for now.